So how did your, how did your sharks do on the ground and all that?
Okay, I think, uh, for you to get, um, it was their first pick, which was, I think, really beneficial for them.
Well, they also got rid of what that, that defense.
Uh, you guys are.
Uh, what?
Car, um, we're live.
I can learn.
I'll let you know if something burns.
Yeah.
Pardon?
I'll let you know if something looks hungry back here.
Okay.
For the most part, I'm not happy about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it's the appointed hour, we're ready to go and I'll start off with the roll call. And so that if I can get this right, I'll start with our remote access commissioners that are joining us. Uh, Doreen.
Here.
Joe.
Present.
And then for those here in presence in the building, uh, Mike.
Here.
John, here. Michael.
Here.
And Ron, I'm here, so we're all here. Uh, first up, uh, we have meeting minutes from June 16th, 2022. Did anybody find anything to, uh, add, change, out of order, needed correction? I'll take the tone silence as a no that it looks in order. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the minutes from last month's meeting.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that was, uh, was that Doreen or Joe that?
Joe.
Joe, uh, Doreen? Oh, Doreen, did we lose you?
She the one in the mountains?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've got Joe, Doreen, question mark.
Oh my God, I said I.
Oh, okay, it didn't, I'm sorry, it didn't come through, so.
Okay, I know, I apologize, I'm in the mountains.
Oh, no, no, that, that, that's okay, well, it just means that since I want to make sure both of you are included, uh, I will probably, I'll, I'll try to ask more frequently that you're with us or, you know, some form of affirmation, positive, negative, whatever the case, so that we can at least do this in a, uh, a verbal fact when you can't see her, us, we can't see you, so. I appreciate you putting up with me and us on that standpoint.
No worries.
Okay. And next up, any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? And since there is, for the record, there's no one in attendance in the auditorium or public here, uh, unless there is someone online that would like to make a comment. Now is your opportunity.
I'm good.
And since we have no common public comments where some things are not on the agenda, then we'll move on to, uh, the Lafayette Urban Renewal District. And we left it off last week that we would, you know, have a chance to review the secondary part of the package, just to look and see information that had been provided. Uh, it looks like we have a guest presenter that's going to ask questions, explain a little more. I'm horrible that I don't remember names.
Elaine.
Okay, Elaine, so I, I take it you're going to walk us through some portion of this, provide some additional explanation that Scott may not have gotten into last week. And then, you know, it'll be the planning commission that will sit down and render our opinion on this for the recommendation or not to the city council.
Thank you, I'm Elaine Howard, I'm the principal of Elaine Howard Consulting. Scott was with you last week and I believe he gave a pretty thorough presentation. I have been, uh, it was recommended, and you can tell me you don't want me to do this if you want, but it was recommended that I go ahead and go through the presentation again, since this is livestreamed. And you can tell me whether you think, um, what, whether you as a planning commission would like me to do the entire presentation again, or just go through some of the comprehensive plan issues.
Uh, I would say the comprehensive plan is.
I don't give you the whole presentation.
Do you want the whole presentation?
I don't want.
No, present, so let's go through the, uh, the comprehensive plan issues.
Okay.
And if anything comes up, or you, if you think there might be some little snippet from the presentation that provides a little background, then we can certainly do that, because this is going to be available to the public, so.
Absolutely.
To, to their benefit as well.
Okay, so I wanted to just give a little bit of background on urban renewal first, and I heard you talking before the meeting, and I wanted to clarify just one point that you were talking about. The question, uh, or the discussion item that I heard you talking about was what revenues actually go to the Urban Renewal Agency? And it is just those revenues off of the increased growth within the urban renewal area from permanent rate property taxes. So no GL bonds, no local option bonds, no SDCs, it is just the portion of the permanent rate levy for your taxes that we all pay in November on our property that goes into the urban renewal area. And people's personal, you know, you, all of your property tax bills do not go up because of urban renewal. Urban renewal doesn't, uh, do a new tax, it just divides the taxes that are already paid differently, so that the increases in value if the urban renewal area is established go to the Urban Renewal Agency to do projects and programs within that urban renewal area only. The statute that governs urban renewal in Oregon is ORS 457, and it does require that when the city council passes, uh, an ordinance on an urban renewal plan, that there is a finding that the plan conforms to the comprehensive plan. There is also a statutory requirement that a briefing be made to the planning commission. Um, I've been doing urban renewal work for 18 years, I'm the longest standing urban renewal practitioner in Oregon. And we have put those two items together because it just makes sense for the planning commission to deliberate on the comprehensive plan issue, because that is your realm of influence for the city, is on the comprehensive plan. So our goal tonight is to have you, uh, confirm that the urban renewal plan does conform to the comprehensive plan. The way we find, make those findings in the document that you were given before was, uh, we look at the different projects and goals and objectives of the urban renewal plan. And then we look at your comprehensive plan and make sure that everything that is proposed fits within those different goals within your comprehensive plan. So the areas that we detailed were open space, transportation, public facilities, recreation, community development, housing, land use and urbanization, citizen involvement and plan development. Under each of those, we pulled out both in the staff report and within the plan itself, the goal statement that supports the types of activities that are being proposed within the urban renewal plan, and then make a finding that, um, this activity conforms to that section of the urban renewal plan. So for example, on open space, the goal statement is to conserve desired open space wherever practicable. And the finding is there are projects specified in the plan that will improve the park and recreation facilities in the area, hoping to provide and maintain a diversified system of safe and attractive parks, open spaces, and recreation and facilities. So we have done that for each of the different project categories. Um, and if you want me to go, since there aren't that many, if you'd like me to walk through those, I can. My assumption is you've probably read those and may have questions, so I'll stop here and see if you'd like me to present each of those, or if you have specific questions you'd like to ask.
Does anyone have any specific, does anyone have any specific questions? Uh, Joe, Doreen, any specific questions?
Uh, no, this is Joe, I do not have any.
No, this is Doreen, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, yes, we can, thank you. Uh, so. Elaine? No questions from our standpoint? Well, well, okay.
Uh, I, I do have a question. If there is a, uh, objective, uh, stress, and it is not outlined in the comprehensive plan, uh, what does that do to the urban renewal, uh, development plan?
The urban renewal plan doesn't have to reiterate the same language that's in the comprehensive plan. It just has to, um, not be contrary to the comprehensive plan. So we, for, for example, the open space one that we just talked about, and for transportation, um, the goals within the comprehensive plan are the development of a well-connected street network that is safe, accessible, and efficient for motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists, and the transportation disadvantaged in Lafayette, and encouraging and inviting pedestrian and bicycle family streetscape. So within both of those, um, it, going along with both of those goals in your comprehensive plan, there are proposed projects within the urban renewal plan that will provide or implement that portion of the comprehensive plan. So the goals and objectives in the urban renewal plan don't have to come directly from the comprehensive plan, they just can't be counter to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, uh, can you give, uh, give me, because I'm a little slow at times, an example of what would be contrary to the comprehensive plan? And what does that do to the process?
Um. Well, that's a good question, because whenever we develop urban renewal plans, we always try to make them conform to the comprehensive plan. So we try to never put in a project that, that wouldn't be supported. So, um, let's say your comprehensive plan, um, said that in single-family, uh, in, in, in housing development, you'll never, um, put commercial uses within a residential area. And if we were proposing a new development that would be supported by urban renewal that had commercial uses in the residential area, that would not conform to what your comprehensive plan provides. But.
At that point, what happens?
Um.
There, there's a mismatch, and if there is such a thing, uh, what does that do to the process?
Well, generally, if, if, if we thought there was something that did that, we, we would take that particular project out of the urban renewal plan.
So, so, so red, and basically kind of to summarize what Mike is looking at is, could something come up that, as far as the thought process, could something come up that might conflict with a community's, uh, comprehensive plan, the answer to that is yes, however, from an urban renewal standpoint, you would never have that situation, because you'd find out, hey, that, that would conflict, so that is not something that we are going to put in there in the first place, so therefore you effectively will never have a conflict.
Right.
It's, uh, what if, but since that, in effect, that can't take place, you're not gonna, you would not include anything like that.
That, that's correct. And we have, we have had circumstances where cities have wanted to do something and, um, as consultants, we do kind of act as a watchdog for the statute and say, well, you really can't do that with urban renewal funds, or you really can't do that, because I, I did have a circumstance where a city was wanting to develop residential within an industrial area, and we told them, we can't put that in the plan, because it's not, um, it's not zoned appropriately yet. We can assume it's going to develop in the future, and at some point, you all can go through a, a zone change or a comp plan change, but you can't actually spend money on, um, uh, uh, on a project that wouldn't go along with your comprehensive plan.
Right, so in that situation, maybe something could be done in the future after things change, but upfront, again, upfront, the idea is, no, that's something you can't do.
That's correct.
I see, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's, it's kind of like you say, it's that two inch sort of, make sure there's nothing in there in the first place, but if somebody does try to do something, then the plan itself is kind of self-administering and self-writing, and that, it'll sit down and say, uh, no, you've now reached the other end of the field.
Right.
And you gotta, you gotta go back to the city, you're gonna gotta stay in, basically gotta stay in the lane.
Right.
Uh, until such time you change the lane. You can go back and, and update the comprehensive plan.
You could.
To, uh, encompass, you know, uh, uh, a new direction.
Right.
Potentially, or I suppose you could, as you're saying, industrial to residential, you can't do that upfront, but if the city decides, that community decides to go through the process, um, converting some chunk of that industrial to residential, they could go through that process, they rezone it. Now that little piece, whatever it is, maybe it's a one-block area, that's rezoned, then that, then all of a sudden, now it does fall under.
Right.
The comprehend, the, the urban development plan, so you haven't spent any funds to do that. But once it's done and brought under the appropriate, then going forward, they might be able to use some course urban development funds in that one blocking example.
I think there is a, a potential uh, sub-project in the plan to be able to assist a developer on looking at a comp plan or zone change, um, if it's in the interest of the city to have that happen. So if, you know, if, like that, that, there's a large parcel within the area, if somebody came in and wanted to do a development there, but there needed to be a comprehensive plan change or a zone change, um, but it was something the city supported, it was a kind of development that you wanted or needed. Um, the plan does allow for assisting the developer to, um, look at the issues of what would happen, what, what would need to be involved in getting a comprehensive plan change.
So again, there's a little flex, there's still a little flexibility within it as well, because they're half asleep. We can only, we can only make decisions based upon the information today, and in five, seven years' time, information is going to change.
Right.
We can't worry about that today.
Right.
We gotta worry about what today was today.
Right, and we find that all the time, these are 30-year plans, or 25 to 30-year plans, so things change. 10 years ago, housing wasn't the crisis that it is now in our communities. 10 years ago, electric vehicles weren't, um, becoming such a, a desired and, and needed mode of transportation, so get thi- things, things change.
Yeah, there'll be something else that'll come out, you know, like you say, we can't envision yet this, whether it's the comprehensive plan or the re-renewal district, they'll still work together.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a living, breathing thing. Okay.
And I have a question, Elaine, is your agency that controls the funds moving into a project?
No.
Okay.
No, we just help write the plans, or if in the future you need to do an amendment. Um, we do advise agencies if they come to us and say, hey, we really want to try to, um, get new development on this parcel, how, how can you help us? Or, um, we, we do that kind, but we do not administer the funds. The funds are administered through your urban renewal agency, which is comprised of your mayor and city council.
So, so.
They are.
The community of Lafayette is the one that's going to administer the district itself and the funds associated. But you're still a resource as far as reaching out.
Right.
Thoughts and ideas, enhanced suggestions, yes. Okay. Uh. No further questions on our part? Now, is there, I suppose I'll make the question to you, is there anything that you think we should know of before we converse amongst ourselves on this?
Um. I don't think so, I think Scott did the full presentation last time.
Yep.
I've answered your questions, I can answer anything else, we do have suggested language if you agree that it conforms. And the reason we do suggested language is the statute is prescriptive in the terminology, so it uses that word conforms. And, uh, that, that is the verb that we would like used, because then it meets what is stated in the statute. Um, and you can rephrase that or change that however you want, but if you would use the word conforms, um, that would be very helpful.
I don't want to conform.
So, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll do the stance, we've got all the information, and really, it's about does the information as we've been presented, does it have a shown or demonstrated that it conforms with our com- comprehensive plan that exists today? Have also been demonstrated that this is a living, breathing thing, so I'll do this. I will make the motion that we use the planning commission with regard to the Lafayette Urban Renewal Plan that has been presented to us both on June 16th and, uh, re-commented on here this evening, July 21st, that I will move that the Lafayette Planning Commission finds, based upon the inform, information provided in the staff report and the provided attachments, that the Lafayette Urban Renewal Plan conforms with the Lafayette Comprehensive Plan.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe says aye.
Joe says aye?
Doreen says aye. Doreen says aye.
Okay. Then, motion is passed and carried, and that will allow our information that we've provided to city council, city council knows that we are in support of, this supports a comprehensive, they can then move forward to what the next step will be.
And the next step is, for anybody who happens to be listening and would like to go, is August 4th at a, a special meeting, at a different date meeting of the city council, because people weren't available on the, I'm gonna double check my calendar here, but I'm sure that's right. Yes. Um, August 4th will be their vote on the ordinance.
Okay. Well, Elaine, I would like to thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
For giving of your time and putting up with us.
My pleasure. That, that, that's what this is all about, is, uh, helping you all figure out what it is and how, how it will work, so. Happy.
One, one more tool and one more step in the process to figure out as Lafayette goes through this process, what do we want to be when we grow up?
That's right.
Trying, trying to figure that out since 1846.
All right, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening. Um. Is there any new business that we know of? I know, new business?
Well, I've got a question, and it may not be under new business.
This is broken.
But.
Question?
Uh, I've noticed uh, in the three years that I've been here in Lafayette, that the downtown business area has got the highest vacancy rate that I've seen so far. And I guess my question is, what's being done about it? Does anybody know?
I would like to say that the urban renewal district project is there to help facilitate more businesses, attractive business to move in, to boost the downtown business scene.
And, and if I remember, one of the comments that Joe Jacks made in a past meeting, I don't know whether you were at the commissioner account at that time, but, you know, there's always this, you know, it's like, what can cities do to attract business? And, you know, everybody's thinking, well, make it a really nice place that's going to attract business. And that's not entirely true, it's, it's kind of like you got, it's almost like you gotta give them, there's this give and take in order for. Yes? Yes? Okay. In order for business to be attracted to the community, the community has to have things to offer. But really, it's the business that comes in, because it's going to be economically viable and advantageous to them to be here, that will provide those things to the community, so.
Well, I've proved that before, and to me, that's a chicken and an egg.
It is very much a chicken and an egg situation when it comes to attracting business.
Yeah, you have to have, I think every community has to have something to offer. Okay, you can't just say, well, come on in here and you create the, the good environment for business.
You're right on that score, there has to be, the city has to do, or community has to, just enough, because they have limited resource, but just enough to be at least
An incentive.
Attractive with the tax rate to some, you know. In some cases, yeah, in some cases, they go tax rates, or another case, it's like, hey, maybe a road needs to be approved or something, but yes.
A perfect example would be Carlton. Carlton was one of these little big water towns that had absolutely nothing going for itself. And then, like, a, a, a sponsor who, who and helped get businesses, um, on that main street, and that's basically who they are, with someone as a benefactor.
But then, but then benefactors.
Also.
That benefactor is the, is a, is a benefactor, in any case, it's not the city. It's not the city government, it's some individual
Yes.
that has the desire to do something, you know.
The community or the, uh, the city doesn't go out and solicit, you know, a benefactor. They're not advertising for benefactors, okay? And it shouldn't, I don't think, should be the responsibility of the city or the community to do that, okay? Uh, but I've heard, uh, that comment a number of times from a number of different sources, like, we're waiting for this person with a lot of money to sink into, you know, our business district. And I'm going, what?
He, he wasn't eating it.
Yes?
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, Joe, Doreen? Comments?
It wasn't Joe.
Oh, Doreen?
I think it was somebody in the background.
Oh, okay, oh.
I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay, no apologies necessary, we just make sure that somebody isn't excluded or left out in the call.
Uh.
Thank you.
So I'm asking, uh, this kind of a question is that, uh, through some inquiries and reporting of, of, uh, some issues, coming to find out the city did not have a plan. I don't know, if you don't have a plan, how is it ever going to change? You know?
This might, you know, this, and this particular subject or topic. Uh, yeah, I, I, you know, like I say, there's a chick, there's chicken and egg.
And this discussion may not be appropriate for this forum, and I apologize.
No, it's, it's a perfectly good question, it's perfectly fine, I'm going, I would, I'll go out and say, at the moment, that question might be best addressed, or at least presented to Preston, city manager, get his thoughts on it, see what he's got to say, because he's been around a number of communities.
Well, let me give you the history that hits my mind, working in that area, I had reported to, to the city. I had reported to, to the city. Okay, uh, Kevin and Preston, that there was huge potholes four or five inches deep on Bridge Street. Okay, and there was, you know, a potential problem of safety, you know, uh, damage and all kinds of stuff. I was informed that there was no budget to fill those holes. And that it was quite expensive to have that done and uh, and I, I mentioned that, you know, I think I'll bring it up to city council. Well, that didn't go very far.
Okay, so you have Preston, you then, yeah, city council would have been another thought that would have come to mind.
What happened after being in.
Budget committee, budget committee might, because what you're this is certainly beyond what we can do and manage other than uh, probably better off drafting a letter, if you have any kind of suggestions or recommendations. Because really what you're getting at in, in some respects is it ties into that concept of, well, what does Lafayette want to be when it grows up? And I've been here since oh five and the only answer that I, that I could clearly see at this point is Lafayette is in that position or mode of being a bedroom community. Which means it's not a destination. It's where people stay. It's where people make their homes.
Well, see, that's not a result of an action.
That's what.
That is an observation of what it's transpired.
What it is.
That it's become. And so what I'm missing is in, in certain aspects is I'm not seeing the, the plans for certain things. If there, if you want, well, uh, more uh, commercial on Third Street, okay, what's the plan? You know, if you want to, you know, a main street surfaced, you know, uh, what's the plan? Is there a budget for it?
And I think, I think your question really is both a blend of wanting to be precedent, city council. And that will ex, you know, that might expose some of the holes and maybe there's the odd budget committee side of things. Because there, there are, there would be potential topics of conversation that we can't do, but other people might.
Well, you know.
Yes.
I said, I read the whole budget committee finance plan and they did this year to fix roads, sidewalks. That kind of, now, specific streets, they don't mention. It's very broad.
Well, resurfacing Bridge Street is expensive.
Oh, absolutely.
But it's always gonna be expensive and it's, unless there is a plan. You know.
While it's still expensive.
And have it costed out, you know, uh, will there be action to be applied to it?
So what'll happen is.
And, and that kind of thing, you know, uh, transcends to the entire city, you know? If there's issues, what's the plan? You know, you, you, uh, if you don't hang a target up on the wall, you're never gonna hit it. And that's my premise and, and.
Yeah, then I would say your best bet would be to have targets in mind is to, you know, just like, I think executives, somebody, you know, something similar to executive summary. There's thought, summary, thought, summary, thought, summary. That doesn't mean anybody, whether it's the city council or precedent or budgets, going to be able to do anything with it, but I think that's I think that is both a good idea, but probably the appropriate way to start down that particular path. Okay.
Thank you for indulging.
That's okay, you know? We're here, if we can't answer, maybe one of us can come up with an idea or two, hopefully at least. Maybe that one?
And Mike, I think the plan we're talking about is this comprehensive plan.
Or it's, the urban renewal plan is going to, is going to provide some support to that.
Some support to the full comprehensive plan, but there is a city Lafayette comprehensive, there is a plan which is the open space transportation.
Well, right.
This necessarily just go for the urban renewal district, uh, I forget how many acres, but it should be for the whole city. So there is a plan out there, but right now.
Well, it works already in the comprehensive.
Yeah.
Uh, which is forty-two years old.
It's a plan.
It's, it's a plan.
It's just one of my pet peeves.
There is a plan now, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
And we found out the age of the plan turns out, the age in the plan.
Is not as important as the superordinate goals.
Superordinate and what and where the goals. Because, you know, the plan will still support those goals, those goals will have to shift and adjust to meet whatever the, whatever the, at that time, current circumstances are.
Yeah, but yeah, in, in my background, if it is not articulated, it doesn't get dealt with.
Well, yeah.
And, and, and that's, that's, that's gonna be my, my.
Goal A dash A, develop a well-connected street network that is safe. So I would say if Bridge, if Bridge Street is not safe, there is a goal for it, but it's not being addressed.
Yes. In some manner, shape or form, and then it's, you gotta figure out.
You know, if, if, uh, the, the statement is that it is not uh, budgeted for. Well, yeah, that, okay, it's not in the plan. Okay, you mentioned urban renewal, that doesn't fall in with the urban renewal. It's, most of that is outside of the
That is urban renewal district. There's very, there's only like a block, just look at the map, like two blocks, other than the, that are in the urban renewal district.
Right, but I'm getting to the, the comprehensive plan is not just for the urban renewal district.
No, the comprehensive urban renewal has to be in conformance with.
And it's not, and it is budgeted towards.
Yes.
Because when comprehensive plans are uh, built and publicized, uh, usually there isn't a urban renewal district, right? You know, somewhere along the line.
Forty-two year later.
Yeah, it gets bigger, you know, so, and uh, I just haven't seen any kind of documentation that says, okay, this is where we were and this is where we would like to be in this.
And, and you know, I'm gonna guess that some of that, you know, you have staff of volunteers, you've got a limited city capability, these things have to, that takes somebody's time, that takes resources, finances. If they don't have either the time or the financial resources to do it, or there's too much change, depending upon what was it, again, may sound like all excuses, but that's the reality of the situation. And you, you can, we can, and so.
I'm arguing with you a little bit.
I, yeah, that's just, I don't wanna argue because I guess this goes, this, we're now getting into, this is definitely a lot beyond what we do, so. I'm gonna say.
Okay.
I'm not saying, don't pursue, I'm just saying by all means pursue, but I think some form of, I think the communication with city staff and city council, those are the more appropriate ones to try to move things forward. And your suggestion of.
Let's put something into, you know, uh, the planning commission. Then basically, you know, here's my, here's my question, you know, the planning commission only raises its head when city council asks us to raise our head.
That may be true and that doesn't mean that we can't raise our head, but we also need to make it we need to, if we raise our head, we want to make it such that it's targeted.
Pertain.
Pertinent, focused.
Sure.
And, you know, if there are four, let's say you have, one has four or five things to contemplate, there is nothing that says that we couldn't sit down and put together, here's a list or four or five things that we had the planning commission think would benefit the community that we want your, meaning city council's input on in terms of support to move forward with.
Way back when, uh, probably on my first day on the commission, you know, I did make the statement that uh, ordinances periodically should be reviewed.
So that would be one thought that maybe ordinance should be.
And to find out, is, is it, is it still pertinent? And is it easy to understand? How many different pages do you have to turn to to get the answer?
And then the counter to that is, if you have, just to exaggerate, if you have a hundred ordinances, but you're only dealing with, say, twelve and all the other eighty-two that are there, they are occasionally used, they are occasionally pertinent, they are occasionally relevant, but they, but they only get used once every three or four years.
So it's not a high priority.
And it's nothing to, yeah, you don't wanna waste the city's time or resources.
It, it's where you've got things like, uh, well, uh, we had uh, the fence issue, you know, and uh, there's, there's other things. Okay, that can be looked at. It's like I'm, I'm reading through uh, the ordinances and it talks about uh, so many feet from a curb. There's not a lot of curbs, or so many feet from the sidewalk and there's in places, there's no sidewalks. So how do you take the measurements? Okay, uh, to deal with an issue that requires measurement? And you don't have your refs, reference points.
And you're the reference points are not the reference points may not be readily available to your eye as far as looking them up. You know, walking out in your eyes, but those reference points are at least available to the city engineers.
Yeah.
And the city, when they go through and do it, so.
But wouldn't that be the responsibility of the planning commission to identify those things? Okay, that would, you know, uh, create confusion or the inability to come up with a, a, a readily available answer. And when we were talking about uh, right of ways and setbacks and that kind of thing, they're using references from center of the road to fifteen feet this way or from the, from the curb, ten feet and so on and so forth. If there's no curb, where do you start your measurements, you know? And so by going through and, and looking and reviewing those things that create confusion and ambiguity, you know, wouldn't it behoove the planning commission to take a proactive position in uh, making ordinances easier to understand and uh, respond to?
That would, that would, that would potentially be that, you know, if you were to, if you were to collect a list of things to potentially work on as the planning commission, that might be something, that would fall on that list of, okay, here are thoughts.
Don't you think most of the ordinances are, are intentionally kind of vague?
Well, they just, just to tell you that.
Say, most people will, will, will just accept versus try to, try to fight little, all these little issues.
You need, you need, you need it both. Something, there'll be things that are concrete, yet there's, some, some specifics, but some vague because you have to have you have to, in some cases, you don't have the exact answer, but there's gotta be guidance. And it has to be at least reasonably clear guidance. Now, clear guidance in this case doesn't mean you can walk out of the street and find. That, that I don't think is necessarily the case, but, you know, so that's one idea, so if you.
Yeah, so there could be others and I think that, you know, uh, there are times where we're not called upon to do anything. But there's plenty to do.
Well, and there may.
And, and the reason that, you know, communities don't progress and move along is because they're not being proactive at that goal. Move it along, create an environment, you know, and you don't know which ones are going to, you know.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. And that, that's where I say, yeah, when in terms of what one might move along, that would be something that would we could come up with, I suppose, we could put together a list of, you know, maybe four, five, six ideas and then present that list to city council, see if there's anything there that might be beneficial, but uh, or that they feel would be beneficial, or if they have, maybe if they had it, those triggered might be beneficial in other way, you know, that they could provide, but short of that, uh,
Well, there.
We could initiate an idea, we could make a recommendation to city council, but if they don't approve, if they don't agree, then we'll waste, we'll spend hours presenting things that will be known.
But if.
Don't wanna do that.
Well.
I don't wanna waste, I don't wanna waste hours of time presenting things that are going to go.
But there's a fifty-fifty shot that they're gonna contribute and say, yes, we now, we've got a planning commission that's being proactive. You know, is that a bad thing?
No.
No, it isn't, okay? So there's no downside risk and there's nothing but upside. So I will propose, okay, that if we don't have anything on our docket, you know, that we have a work session to come up with what the planning commission can do. Okay, to be proactive on their end. Okay, uh, and submit to city council.
So a work session, planning session, address topics, subjects. City. Right. Support. Useful. Useful. Official. For. For Lafayette. To that effect. Okay.
That, that's under the commission. I mean, we don't wanna be running off half top of stuff we should.
So basically, there's ideas because, hey, looks good, flush it out a little more, we flush it out a little more provide it to city council so that they can then so we require they're actually, they can then say, hey, yeah, this man is running for this, that'll take care of some little, you know. It might be just a little minor issue, but hey, taking care of a little minor issue is still, you know, trying to rewrite an annual, big issue.
Yeah.
You know?
Deal with the smaller bits.
Okay. Then.
Of course, you know, if, if the commission as a whole doesn't feel that that's something worthwhile, then it, it dies. Dies here.
I would say if we have nothing else to talk about, why not look at it? Look at something.
I mean, we, we've all volunteered for at least one meeting a month. And there's been a number of months that there hasn't been, you know, commission activity.
And that will, and that will happen from time to time, uh.
That doesn't mean that there isn't opportunities to be proactive on things that moves the community forward.
And you know, that might be the for us and Doreen and Joe, that assuming are still listening in, that might be the.
I might have put them to sleep.
That. I don't hear snoring out there. But that might be a work session, that might be something as far as tying into your concept of work session, that might be the first first question for us, all of us to think about, that is how, how to move the community forward. What are your thoughts? What, what is one or, you know, however many, what, what comes, if you're asked the question, how would you suggest moving the community forward? What is that? What does that look like to you? If the community will move forward, what would that look like to you? What would be different? What would be changed? What would be functioning differently, the out there, you know?
That might be really broad.
That's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's very broad and it's broad for a reason, because that's where, then you can start drilling down.
Yeah, but it has to be under the, the charter of the planning commission.
Well, we can, the, the, this how to move the community forward is going to lead to those things that we make as, hey, here's some suggestions that come up that, uh, we think will move the community forward. Present them to city council, say, hey, city council, this is what we think will.
City councils are, they put together a survey. You've got things prioritized. It's been built into the urban rule development.
Well, that's in the urban review. Well, okay, maybe we look at.
And, and so I'm thinking about as a commission, you know, uh, what can be done, you know, from our charter that will help to move the community forward and make things a little easier for, you know, residents from a, from a planning state.
Well, we can, we can, we can do the planning side of things, but for many of these things, if they get into the, you know, making, making law for the city, we don't do that. That's city council.
Not even suggesting that.
But what we can do is make suggestions to city council.
Yeah.
So again, it goes back to that.
But after having read the ordinances and comprehensive plan and every other and zoning and development, you know, uh, I'm going, ooh.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, but this is a lot more difficult than it needs to be. Somebody was really proud of their literary, uh, literary skill in stringing a few words together, you know? And it, uh, complexity without, uh, purpose is a waste.
Well, true. So if, and like I said, Jeff, you're essentially suggesting that we were to tackle trying to rewrite the annual. That idea could be proposed. But due to the complexity and what it might take, and to go from a complex to a deep, to decomplexify it, that might take
Well.
resources that the ci, that might take resources that the city is not willing to devote. That doesn't mean it's a bad idea. If the city is not willing to vote it, then we may, that, that's just.
I think, but, but I don't know.
Right. So.
You know.
Excuse me. This is just.
This is just.
So I just, I have a thought, um, with this new urban renewal agenda, might that get us more busy? As things come up and they need to get for our review or anything like that, it could be create more work and we might not have.
That is, that is very true, but, uh, if you remember from last, uh, meetings, summer presentation, once this urban renewal district is adopted, it takes three to five years for tax revenue to build up sufficiently before the city really can start doing anything significant, at least in terms of using urban renewal funds. Now, that doesn't mean things can't happen.
Yeah.
Forehand, that's true, but in terms of if one makes the, takes the, makes the connection of it takes urban renewal funds to add some motive to, to add some fuel to getting things moving. You got to have the funds first and that's, that's a three to five, that takes three to five years to build up sufficient funds.
True, true. Then my other thought is like, if we go forward with something like this, I would like to have it somewhat structured. So we actually accomplish things.
Yes.
Oh, I love that.
Yes. And that's why I say, you know, maybe the first step is, oh, the community look like, you know, we've got the urban renewal plan. There may be things in there, some scaled down east side or some little similar. Maybe there's something else that operates totally independently, but, you know.
I do remember Scott mentioning they could take out a loan to get a project started faster as well. So it may happen sooner, but he was thinking three years.
Yeah, three or five, you have to have three, five years.
Revenue.
You got to have the revenue and you have to be able to show and demonstrate that revenue stream to somebody that might lend funds. And even that revenue stream is going to dictate what the loan amount might be. So.
And then I also, I wouldn't want to, um, cause anything that would compete or distract from this.
No, we want to have something that can work in, that is congruent or supportive of as well. Okay. So we'll contemplate a work session. I'm not sure when that will occur. Our next meeting is August eighteenth.
I can throw it in there if there isn't anything on our docket.
Okay.
And we can have, you know, uh, if there's, uh, a, a new request that comes in, uh, they usually, uh, for us to get familiar with the new request doesn't take long. You know, it's usually after you, you get somewhat educated on the subject, it's, it's starting to take longer.
Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Will assume Doreen says aye. I don't think she's on there. She may have gone.